Brad, can I make it? You won't be. Everybody else up? I'd like to call the November 2026 ZBA meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Anthony Jones.
Present.
Richard Brooks.
Present.
Matt Kaiser.
Present.
Ken Hilton.
Present.
Arthur Rossberry Yoder.
Present.
First thing I'd like to do is welcome Mr. Rossberry Yoder to the board. Second thing I'd like to do is point Mr. Hilton and Mr. Rossberry Yoder as voting members tonight. Third thing I'd like to do is item one of the agenda is approval of minutes of the September 23rd, 2025 meeting. What's the wish to the board? Mr. Brooks.
I'll make a motion to approve them as presented.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Second by Mr. Hilton. All those in favor of approving the minutes, raise your right hand. Passes. All right, any number, item number two, old business, any old business that may come before the board. Ms. Crosley.
I want to just note for clarification that Jones is now a full member. So just because that's different from last month.
Yep. I'm all set with that. But is it any old business? Is that the only, is that the only old business you have?
That's all I wanted to say, just for clarification for the minutes and things like that.
Yep. Does any board member have any old business? Okay, we're going to move on to new business. It's been, it's been requested, and if the board doesn't have any issue, we're going to address Three Bravo, the New England Sports Hub, before we address Three Alpha. Does the board have any issue with that? Okay, so item three Bravo of the agenda is New England Sports Hub and Event Center LLC is seeking a variance from section 19.20.c, .3.x, and 19.20.4 alpha for a banner sign that exceeds the allowable square footage on a property located at 6 Willand Drive in the Commercial Industrial District, map 63 lot 10-1, ZBA case 12, 2023. You all have received communication from the applicant requesting a continuance to the December 3rd meeting. Any discussion on, Ms. Crosley, anything to add to that?
Nothing to add. The applicant has requested that, and so I think the board should honor that request to allow them to provide additional information for their application.
Any discussion on the board on to do that or not to do that, or any, on that topic? You look in your packet, page three has a motion to continue. Anyone would like to make the motion, but page three shows the motion to continue. And the date, we would, can you, it too is December 3rd. Mr. Brooks.
I move that the application and public hearing for New England Sports Hub and Event Center LLC for variance from section 19.20.c, .3.x, and 19.20.d, .4.a to allow 1,620 square foot sign of signage on a property located at 6 Willand Drive be continued to the next meeting of December 3rd.
December 3rd, 2025.
At the request of the applicant.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Jones. Discussion on the motion. The motion is to continue it to December 3rd. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion passes 5-0. It is continued to December 3rd. Moving to the next item on the agenda. Brighter Day Recovery seeking a variance from table 19.20.d, .4.fotrot for an awning sign that exceeds the allowable area of the canopy facade on a property located at 362 Route 108 in the Commercial Industrial CI District, map 47 lot 3 Alpha, ZBA case 11, 2025. I'll open the public hearing. Ms. Crosley.
Yep. So the applicant seeking to install an 18.75 square foot awning slash canopy sign where a 2.4 square foot, 10% of 24 square feet facade of the awning canopy would be permitted. I provided the definition, the applicable ordinance of awning or canopy signs, which is in addition to the total allowable sign area, one canopy or awning sign may cover up to 10% of the area of the canopy facade. The applicant received, there's a couple of applications related to this project. They received a site plan to establish an outpatient medical office. They have a sign permit for their freestanding sign that is onsite, and the signage allowance is also noted in that. And there is a historic variance that was granted for this property in 2014 from section 20c, 2f to allow an off-premise sign, and section 20d, 4ev to allow two freestanding signs on one lot. This permits a sign for the abutting property of map 47 lot 3b on the lot. The applicant has addressed the five criteria, so the board can take review of it.
Any questions for Ms. Crosley? Mr. Jones.
Do you think in the definition of awning, the portion of the definition where it specifically says projecting over a public way is important?
So Ms. Crosley and I had some conversation about that.
About the intent.
About whether that means over public property or over a way that somebody may walk, as in a public walkway.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, so we kind of figured out that it was more of a public walkway or where they could walk versus over public property.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Crosley? All right, will the applicant please come forward? State your name and how your application meets the five criteria.
Skarkata Brighter Day Recovery. Good evening. As indicated in the fact support in the request, you know, clear signage will reduce the difference between our public healthcare facility and a neighboring landscape company. We do continuously have people coming in looking for the landscape company, and we're kind of bound by HIPAA compliance, you know, as well. And, and it says, you know, if the variance were granted and the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because the ordinance seeks to promote orderly and consistent signage, allowing an awning sign that identifies our healthcare business maintains the spirit of the ordinance by keeping signage tasteful and functional while preventing misdirected entry that could compromise client confidentiality. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because the benefit to the applicant in avoiding misdirected visitors and protecting hipper sensitive clients outweighs any minimal visual impact. Denying the variance would unfairly burden our healthcare practice with risks and confusion not shared by other businesses. If the variance were granted, then before, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because a small professional awning sign will have no negative impact on neighboring property values. On the contrary, it may enhance the clarity and appearance of the site by reducing confusion and distinguishing our business from the landscaping company behind us. The unnecessary hardships would be A, awning to a special condition of the property that distinguish us from other properties in the area. Denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because individuals seeking the landscape business frequently enter our business by mistake. As a healthcare provider, subject to HIPAA privacy protections, this creates a risk of confidentiality breaches and undermines client trust. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to this property because while the ordinance is designed to maintain uniform signage, applying it here prevents us from protecting patient privacy and safety. The proposed use is reasonable, a reasonable one because professional modest awning sign is a standard way to identify a healthcare facility and prevent confusion. B, in addition, without a variance, the property cannot reasonably use, be used in strict conformance with the ordinance because the lack of precise identification results in frequent mistaken entries. A variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of the property as a confidential healthcare practice.
Okay. All set?
I believe so.
So the process here is we'll ask to see if anyone else wants to speak.
Yep.
And then we'll call you back up and have you ask, and ask you some questions.
Okay.
Okay? I'm not sure if this gentleman's with you or not.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll find out, do you have anything to add?
I just want to add that.
So state, so state your name.
Sorry. Josh Caldwell, Brighter Day Recovery. Joshua Caldwell, Brighter Day Recovery. I also, when we first moved into the property, there was already an awning sign on the property. We actually took that existing awning sign and created our new sign. So we were, when we first had the sign created, we were under the impression that it was already approved from the city, and that's why we spent the money to get it made. And then when we submitted the application, we were then told that the sign didn't meet standards and that if we wanted to get it, to hang the sign, we needed to do this process. So that's why we're here.
Okay, makes sense.
That's, that's all I had.
Okay.
Well, sorry. I'm, I'm there some day to day, and, and I see people walking in quite a bit confused, thinking because Wade's was there at one point. So people will, and we share a road, a driveway, so people will pull in if they got like a job interview or something and thinking that we are Wade's.
No, that's okay.
That is the last thing I have to say.
Okay. Okay. I'll have the applicant come back up. I'm going to open it up to questions from the board. We'd like to kick it off. Mr. Brooks.
I think we have to do regional impact first, right?
You're right, you are absolutely, no, we have to do that if we go into non-public.
Okay.
Non-public.
Getting ahead of myself then, never mind.
You are, but that's okay.
So what happens, you take a month off.
Did you have a question?
Not yet.
Okay. Mr. Jones.
I saw in our staff memo that the minor site plan was approved this year. Did you guys, did your business open this year?
Yes.
Okay, so the timeline that you guys are talking about, some confusion on the signage, that's, that's a fairly recent issue. I mean, how often would you say that that signage gets confused and people are in different buildings?
Josh would know better than I.
I would say, I can think.
So if you're gonna, yeah, so they can pick it up.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I can think of four times in the time that we've been open that I've had to turn people around.
Okay.
And I'm not at the center all the time either. I'm on the road a lot. So, yeah, I can think of four times. And every time, they've come in for an interview.
And stay up there because the next question might be for you too. The previous awning that was already there, did you replace the entire awning? Or does your sign cover the existing sign that was already there on the awning?
Just the existing sign.
Okay.
That was previously there.
Okay, so that.
So the awning itself is still.
It's the same awning from the previous owner.
We just, the metal that the sign itself on is what we replaced.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Other questions from board?
This is just an informational question. It was mentioned that was a couple of times that it, that this replaces a sign that was already there, essentially identical in size. And I'm just wondering if we have any visibility into the prior approval of that sign for the previous business, you know? Because it seems like, I'm not drawing a conclusion yet, but it seems like it's not a new, it's not a change or a new challenge essentially. It's, so that's the question.
So we can either, that's probably a question we'll defer to the non-public session.
Okay.
Not, not during the, the public, public session. And then we'll have Mrs. Crosley can get into that.
If I can just add.
You can be, but the applicant, if it's, if the applicant would like to address that, they certainly can.
My understanding is that it wasn't compliant. You know, I mean, in full transparency, I believe that we, when we discussed it, that it hadn't been officially approved by the, by the city, so.
Okay.
However, they snuck that one by, they snuck it by and.
Okay.
We're just, like I said, we just, you know, assumed, which is the mother of all error, that, you know, if we had a sign made that would just, I mean, go back to replace that, it would be okay, and here we are.
Okay. Mr. Brooks.
When you pull into a parking lot, obviously, this would be on the front side of the building. There's parking lots, front and rear.
Correct.
Do your clients frequent the front, the back, or does it matter? Is there a routine entrance?
Anybody that's coming for the first time would, I mean, typically, I would think, pull. I, I can't say for sure, obviously, but I would, you know, human nature would have you pull up, you know, I mean, to the front. So being able to have that visible would certainly make things a lot easier.
And the way this faces the road, rather, because you actually turn into a side road. If you're headed south, you'd turn right in there. Then you'd have to turn left in the parking lot, and then the building would be on your right.
Correct.
So I guess you wouldn't really see that sign until you've already parked almost.
Unless you came from.
I, yeah, if you're coming north, you're right, you'd drive by it first, you would see it.
Yep.
I guess I would head from the south direction, but that's just my particular reference from where I.
Understood.
Do where I live.
So the, you wouldn't see it until you pulled in, correct? But as you're walking up, you would see it? So you would know this is not Wade's Landscaping, this is not where my interview is.
So you're more concerned with people entering the building than just being on premises?
Correct.
Okay. And just one more question, have you, is there any other signage that could be put up? Or could it be altered in some way to kind of direct people to Wade out back? You know, to be more clear, I guess, with the existing signage?
I suppose if Wade, you know, I mean, put up a sign that said, you know, I mean, directing towards the back, I don't think there's really anything that, I mean, maybe, maybe we could, but we'd have to look at what would be allowed in order to, in order to do that.
Fair enough.
We haven't really traveled that road yet, I suppose, so.
Mr. Hilton?
But that would be the, the other guy's responsibility to put up the signage for, it's, it's not his responsibility to put up signs pointing back to the other business, I would think. I mean, he's trying to, he's trying to make sure that, you're trying to make sure that people that come into your business are coming to your business.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
So remind me on this property, and I remember when the application came in for the, the second sign on the property, Wade is behind you, correct?
Correct.
So they're, they're driving through your property, correct?
Basically, yes. It's, I think it's a shared driveway, if you will.
Okay. I mean, our, and I'm just trying to understand this because, because our drawing shows that basically you are, you're the landowner of the driveway, and I don't, I don't know if there's a deeded right or how that works. But so they're driving through your property to get to Wade, right? Okay. All right, so that makes sense. All right, so I just understand, I understand that now. I just want to make sure I was clear. Now, the city's signed ordinances, they are a little, I want to use the word convoluted, but there is a lot of options.
Yep.
One of the options that that property still has is to put a sign on the building versus on the canopy.
Yep.
Have you considered that option?
Yes, but didn't really find, I guess, aesthetically tasteful spot on the side of the building that we could put it.
Okay. Now, one of the key crux on granting a variance is the uniqueness of the property that unfairly jeopardizes, that makes it such that we should grant the variance for your property, but not for others. And this is primarily a sign size issue. So you, because you want to put a sign that's bigger than allowed. So what, why, what is unique about that property that should allow it a sign bigger than other properties?
The size of the canopy, that, you know, I mean, that comes, the awning, I guess, if you will, that comes over the, you know, the walkway to the, to the front door. It's just not, it's not very big, so if I was to put a sign there that met the, you know, the proper size, it would be, you know, this big in the middle and be more difficult to distinguish.
Okay.
Without really, you know, taking a very hard look at it.
Right. Okay. I just, just trying to clearly understand that. All right. All right. Other questions for the applicant? Mr. Jones, sorry.
Circle one last question, jumping off his. If you were to put a sign on the facade that was the same size as the building, is the majority of the building windows, I mean, it's hard to see just from a street view.
It is, there's a lot of windows.
But there is really a ton of wall space to use. Is that, is that a fair characterization?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
There isn't really a ton of wall space to use. Is that a fair characterization?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's what I was saying, it wouldn't, we could probably do something, but it wouldn't be very aesthetically pleasing.
And plantings around the building could be in the way and.
Yeah.
So do you, I know you're new there. So do you have any, currently have any plans to put any other signs on the building?
I do not.
Okay. Any sign, are there signs on the back of the building?
No, not that I'm aware of. I don't believe so.
Do you plan, I mean, is, is that a valid entrance to the back of the building? I didn't drive around the back, so.
No.
You, you don't encourage people to come in the back?
Except for, you know, if they're existing, you know, existing clients, they would, you know, could park in the back and then kind of walk in. But other than that, as far as a first time visitor, no.
Okay. All right. All right. Further questions for the applicant? Mr. Hilton?
How many people do you have coming and going per day?
Anywhere between 15 and 25.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
How many of those are employees? I mean, a lot of your parking's in the back, but is that mostly used by employees?
Three employees.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Hilton.
What kind of business was in there before you guys?
I believe Wade Landscaping at one point had occupied it, and then there was, and it's listed on the tax, I think, as an auto dealer.
Was the sign the same size as what you guys put up, or was yours a little bit bigger?
Well, the existing sign that's there out front now, the main one, that was, that was there. We just recovered it, refaced it, and the sign that was on the.
Yeah, you had a picture of that.
Yeah.
Can we see that picture? We can pass it around. Thank you very much, sir.
Is that screen printed on?
No, it's actually, it's like an aluminum, aluminum that was screwed on and with basically, I don't know if that was a decal in the front of that. Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant?
And I have a picture of the.
Forgive me, I want to ask a question here. Is this, this is what it looks like now?
Oh, there it is, right there. That's, no, it's, that's what we want it to look like. That's what we're requesting it look like.
So you, but, so you've had, you've had the sign made.
Correct.
And anyone can have, you can have a sign made anytime you want.
Yep.
But you have not installed the sign.
No, because we found out when we applied for the, the main sign that we couldn't put that sign up because it didn't, it didn't fit.
Right. Okay. I understood it. Rossberry?
It's for the non-public.
Okay, yep. All set, Mr. Hilton, or?
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Last chance for the applicant to say, provide us, to convince us to approve it. Any other disinformation?
Thank you for your time.
That's, thank you very much. All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. First thing of order will be regional impact. I have looked at it, I don't think there's a regional impact. Does anyone else believe there's regional impact? If none, we'll entertain a motion. Mr. Brooks?
R S A 3656, local land use board, she'll, I'm sorry, reading too much here. Motion, I move that the variance request from Brighter Day Recovery does not have potential for regional impact.
We have a motion to have a second. Second by Mr. Hilton. The motion is that it does not have regional impact. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion passes 5-0. Discussion on the variance. The variance criteria.
I have a, I'm going to bring, come back to the question I had earlier, especially since I've seen this. My recollection is that there was a Tesla dealer at the time that this sign was on there. And my question again is, here's the sign that I remember seeing on the Tesla dealer. Was this sign approved by the city, or was it not? Do we know?
Yep, so we did file research based off of this permit request to confer how that sign was, came to place. It was not referenced in the prior sign application, so we did not approve that. And we researched back for all the sign permits at the property, and there was no signs for awning signs referenced in any of the permits historically for this property.
Okay, so is it appropriate for me to just make an observation about, or an opinion at this point?
Absolutely.
Okay. In technical terms, what I'm hearing is that this has never been approved, and it's outside the rules and technically would not be approvable. With that, or, you know, a variance would be not necessarily justified. However, there's another factor here I want to point out, and that, that has been a continuing violation, shall we say. It's been customarily present in about its own form. The sign that the Tesla people had before the Tesla people, there was something else in there, and I recall the front of that awning having some sort of a sign on it. In, in fact, it's been an existing, not allowed, but continuing use. And so in that sense, it's consistent, and the community is kind of used to it. It's not, in that sense, the usual kind of violation. It's not a de novo thing where we're starting from scratch, and there never was a sign there before, and the applicant is coming forward with a non-compliant sign that's totally different from what there was before. So in that sense, I'm inclined to, to feel that a variance is justified.
Okay. Mr. Brooks?
Just kind of looking back through the ordinance here and, you know, canopies or awnings, they're kind of the same thing, but I think of an awning as stretching along a building, more so like what we have downtown here, over sidewalks, which obviously have a long facade, the length of the building usually. A canopy could be just over a window, could be just over a doorway. You know, they're, they're kind of very different, so, you know, they're kind of roped into 10% of its facade. And when you think of a canopy being a small feature, 10% makes it even that much smaller. So coupling that with the way this building is built, there's really no wall space, like they said. It's, you know, basically, kind of looks like a ranch where you see a lot of roof, but no real place to put a, you know, a wall mounted sign. You know, I don't know if that makes this unique, but the property having essentially a private drive, private road, driveway, shared driveway, you know, there's several ways to look at it. I don't know by definition what it is, but a lot of the businesses there have actual roads leading out to businesses in the back. This seems to share a driveway or right-of-way through the parking lot, so it seems unique to me in that sense, as far as looking for this uniqueness that a lot of times is not the easiest thing to find with situations. I can also understand the need for getting people to the proper place. I've delivered stuff to and from Wade Landscaping, and yes, the first time I pulled into your place, thinking that was it. Because, you know, before I enter a property, I want to check in at the office, so that's where I started. Yeah, I was at the wrong place, there was nobody there, it was closed at the time, so. So I definitely see, understand the confusion of it as well. You know, I certainly don't think it would be contrary to the ordinance because it is a modest sign, you're not extending it bigger than the canopy, and it is only a canopy, not an awning, as I think of, which, you know, they rope them into the same thing, but they're two very different things, in my opinion. So sometimes the ordinance is, so to speak, the hardship. I don't believe it would hinder property values in the area, and the hardship, I guess, is the biggest thing, but, yeah, I guess I'll leave that up for more discussion.
Discussion. Mr. Brooks? Next, sorry, again, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I think Mr. Brooks hit the nail right on the head. I mean, the unique part about this property is the sign at the front of the property advertises two businesses, and you essentially have to drive through the parking area of one business to reach that second business. So it is quite ambiguous where you are. I think that the brick building without a sign on the actual building itself, it looks like an office for the landscape contractor in the back. So that, I think, is the key hardship item that looks here differently. Now, if the size is specifically the concern, I feel that the intent of the 10% limit is more. Now, if the size is specifically the concern, I feel that the intent of the 10% limit is more for pedestrian walkways, and this is a building that's set back from the street with a, with a parking area in the front. So there's quite a bit of distance between the building itself and the street, where a 10% of the facade area, of the canopy, sorry, area being used as signage would be literal and visible to, to drivers, you know, on, on the street itself, or even the sidewalk on 108. So that's kind of where I'm at with the hardship criteria, and I think the rest of them I'm at. I mean, these are commercial properties, the signage is certainly not going to affect property values, it's not going to hinder the use of the property in any way, and I think the public interest is preserved, because clear signage to direct you on where you're going, especially for a healthcare type of use, is, is instrumental to the operation of that business.
Yeah, I think one thing we have to look at is, regardless of what business is in there, because it's unique, it's the property, so it could be any business, we have to make sure that the, the variance is applicable to whatever business is in there. Now, this, maybe, maybe not, but the way this, the city has interpreted the requirements, I mean, we have to follow the ordinances, this is a size, this is a sign size issue. Really, that's all it is. Not that simple, I know. And the size, and maybe, and this is guessing, the, the percentage, obviously, it's for personnel walking up. You're not going to see this canopy driving by, or what's on the canopy, because that, that's not the intent of, I, I don't think that's the intent of the ordinance. I think it's, it's, it's personnel walking by, or whatever, they can see it. There's the sign out front, there are two signs out front, one for each of the businesses, and this, I think theirs is right in front of their building, and Wade's is off to the side by the driveway. But, so really, the question is the size, and is, is, is there a uniqueness of this property that says that, hey, we can make, we should make the sign on this canopy bigger, or allow it to be bigger than others in the, in the area, others that are allowed in the city? That's really the issue. Mr. Hilton?
I think it, as you're driving in, that sign being there on the canopy would be a good, even with it, that would, that would make it an acceptable size sign, so that you could see it from the driveway, because if you had it only 10% of the size of the, the canopy, you're going to be, it's going to be tough to see. So as you're driving in the driveway, you want to be able to see that sign. I would, and it's not, it's not out of the, it's not, in my opinion, it's not out of the spirit of the ordinance. You know, you're trying to. I, I just, I think that that sign would be a good thing, so that you don't have people coming in to this location if they're going to Wade's, and it would accentuate, it's a, it's a nice-looking sign. It's not a gaudy thing. It's not, you know, hanging off the edge, or that flapper's going on there, you know? You know, it's, I think it's a, a good thing. And so I, I'm in favor of this, and I, I don't, I think it's, it's a good, it's not out, obnoxious, you know, or it's not out of the spirit of the ordinance, you know? I think it's a good thing.
Right. Not to put words in your mouth, but I think you, you've talked, basically, grain of variance would be not contrary to public interest, it obviously supports the public interest, and grain of variance would do substantial justice for the applicant, and that it gets the people to their building. So that, what you were talking about, it really fits into criteria, you know, one and three criteria, very, very clearly.
And also the, the hardship, if you have that canopy sign there, that, if you, you'd have to have something on the end of the building, or, you know, I think that that's showing where the entrance to the building is, and it's encouraging people to come over in that direction for the, for the business owner. So I, I'm in favor of this.
Other discussion? Mr. Brooks?
Just looking up definitions, because it falls into this. The facade being the exterior wall of a building exposed to the public view, or that wall viewed by the person's not standing within the building. And then we talk about the facade of the canopy, which, you know, it's really not part of the building, but it's, it's built onto it. So, you know, again, it's, it's a small canopy, in this case, not an awning that runs the length of the building, so. I really do think that the spirit of the ordinance is observed with this, because it's a modest sign, it's not larger than the canopy, it's not extending over it, and the canopy itself is small, it's only 10 feet long and eight feet wide. So, you know, any of the facades are very small on this, compared to the typical canopies or facade or awnings that you see. So I, I really think it comes down to the hardship, and I, I really think that the layout of the property, having the business out back, using that shared driveway, right-of-way, whatever it is, makes this, the, gives it the uniqueness that it needs in this situation, so. Because as, as I said, so many other businesses there, it's like an industrial park, you have a road that serves as several businesses that sit further down back, so making this different.
Okay. If the board does choose to approve this, the only thing I would, maybe we should consider, we could consider limiting the overall signage allowed on the property, that this would, this would basically, you'd have to, if, if you wanted to put additional signage on the property, that this would have to go toward the overall signage that's allowed. Right now, canopies are separate from the overall can, the signage that's allowed. I would, Mrs. Crosley probably can help me with the words, but this would then, we would include this, that way we don't get too many signs on the property. This would kind of take the place of that, some big sign that they can't really put, because they, they have windows and the building doesn't really support, they don't have walls to support that. But it wouldn't, we wouldn't get too many signs.
Yeah. I, I see the, the point you're getting to here. You know, if we allow this as just a canopy, but we should count it towards the wall, or.
Right.
A building-mounted sign, and see it that way, which I, I agree. I, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, and I think we've already indicated this, but I'll say it again, just to be clear. It appears that they have 24.9 square feet of wall signage available, and they're, if we were using this toward the wall signage available, we'd be using up 18.75 square feet of that. So if this were on the facade of the building, no variance would be needed, which I think you indicated at the beginning.
Yeah, that's correct. Would there be some special wording that would work well for us, Mrs. Crosley?
I think you could say, as a condition, that the 18.75 square foot awning slash canopy sign, I know we have some comments about that, but, we have to call it. Awning slash canopy sign shall be included in the wall sign calculations calculated by 1920 D4A. If that sounds acceptable to the board?
Yeah, something like that. Any other discussion by the board? Chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Jones?
After reviewing the application, the file, and all the information presented to the board, I feel that all five criteria have been satisfied, because of the layout of the lot, specifically, the disambiguation of the landscape company out back. And I move at the request of Brighter Day Recovery for a variance from section 19 dot D dot four dot F, to allow an awning canopy sign that is larger than 10% of the area of the canopy facade on the property located at 362 Route 108 be granted with the following conditions. The sign for the awning of 18.75 square feet be counted toward the total allowable signage on the property.
Do you want us to include the 19.20 point delta, point four, point alpha?
No, I think, um. Yes, just be, if the board's acceptable to that, just because that's what calculates the general wall and freestanding signage. The other, there's other sections that have like if, ands, and buts, like they can have a projecting sign that's 20 square, that's not part of those. So it just specifies in that base allowance of signage calculations. I think it's more specific.
That's what I said, right?
Yeah, we're just going to include the number that you said in there.
Section, referencing the section.
19.20 point delta, point four, in your motion.
I accept that.
Okay, that's what I needed to hear. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. The second to the motion. Second by Mr. Hilton. Discussion on the motion. The motion is to approve the variance with, with, with this criteria that the canopy sign be included in the total wall sign calculation, if, if anyone, if they came forth with another application. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor of the variance, raise your right hand. Passes five zero, the variance is granted. We're receiving communication from the office shortly. All righty. You're welcome. No. If you, if, if, yes, if you have a valid sign permit.
No. So I, we need a new sign permit, so I'll talk to you tomorrow in the afternoon. I'm at a conference in the morning. I can talk to you in the afternoon, whether we can amend your prior sign permit, or if we need a fresh one.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right. Item three, Charlie. Any other new business, can we, for the board? Any new business, Ms. Crosley?
Yes. I am, I pass out to you all. We have another survey ongoing. This one is, it's still supporting master plan chapters and regulations and things like that. So this one is related to the historic district, so we'd love getting, it's, it is very targeted to the historic district, so getting feedback from citywide people. And then also, please keep in mind, next week, Thursday, November 13th, we are having the public forum, which I have the flyer, if anybody wants to take it home tonight. We hope that you can make it. Bring friends, family, people that are interested in talking about the different aspects of the master plan. So we're going to be transportation, economic development, historic and cultural resources, Route 108, housing and zoning, and citywide vision, so.
Place and time.
We are going to be at the Career Technical Center, 18 Cemetery Road High School, and it starts at 5 o'clock, and it goes till 7:00.
Okay.
We'll have some light refreshments, too, so.
I believe there's babysitting, too, isn't there?
There is, so if you have kids, and you want them to be entertained, yep.
Okay, that's the right term, sorry.
Yes, there'll be some childcare, so that if there's any sort of conflicts like that, please feel free to bring your family. There's some activities for kids, so it's a family event, a community event. We hope to have lots of people show up.
Thank you.
There's an optional registration. It is optional, but if you want to let us know you're coming, we can account for you.
More food?
More food, yeah.
Anything else, Ms. Crosley?
I think that's it for tonight.
Any new business from the board? Seeing that, a motion to adjourn. Mr. Hilton?
Motion to adjourn?
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosbury Yoder. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We are hereby adjourned.